Call tonight's meeting to order. You would join me in the pledge. My pledge is to the left, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and infinite. Pam, what do you do? Roll call, please.
Mayor, time.
Here.
Alderman Dobbs.
Here.
Alderman Fahey.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett. Alderman Iden.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call room.
Thank you very much. This time, we will look for approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I don't believe we have any presentations or words of personal appearance, so we will skip down to the city administrators' report.
You've got the updated report at your seat. Starting at item six, Cochran started Monday working on the sewer system facilities plan. They're now checking manholes. They'll be doing that over the next few weeks. And then working with Alliance to get some depths and materials and find out what's in the manholes and then work on what's in the lines. And then start developing a plan to stem the influence infiltration in our system and what kind of budget we're going to need to have every year. Pyramid Camp Playground is installed. Have not had a chance to go up and see it yet. Get a chance to up. It looked pretty good on the pictures I did see. Bids were open today for Ninth Street rehabilitation. We'll have the approval and I hope the agreement at the next meeting and maybe try to read it twice at the next meeting. Because we need to get a pre-construction meeting before school's out, so the thing gets started on as soon as possible, like early June. So that can be done while school is in. But I haven't had a chance to. I printed this up this morning, couple other items. We have the ferry survey results linked on our website. That's under the "I would like to" section if you want to see what people answered on the need of the ferry out on the north end of town. And our attorney discussed the agreement with their attorney this afternoon with McBride. So this is on the housing project that we've been looking at. We're hoping to get another agreement from them next week. We'll bring that to the committee to review and if there's any issues, any questions that you have, we'll let the committee work through it with McBride. And then I hope we bring a finalized agreement. There's probably going to be compromise on both sides, just so everybody's aware of that.
Any can really review something? Is it their proposal was pretty far off of what we would have expected because they're saying that they have moved?
Yes. Yeah, they're willing to compromise on some things, other things, they've made the argument of why they can't or why they don't want to. But a lot of the stuff I know those two talked about was more technical issues. But the timing, the how to put in the amount that the city is putting in for infrastructure and how to include that as information. That's kind of some of the touch points we'll have to look at. Any questions on anything else?
I want to go back to number five that you have here about the recent rainstorm and stuff. And there was a couple of issues I'd like to see, especially since Alliance is here and stuff. You know, one with barricades and stuff. And I realize this was on a Friday night. Everybody likes to go home. You know, the timing wasn't good, but, you know, they were calling for several of the news stations quoted it as historical flooding that we were possible of having. And that was pretty widespread, but, you know, when we have a kind of a forewarning like that, can't we get those barricades out? Maybe set them off to the side so that they could be turned quickly, you know, so that we don't have people driving through water? Because I was all over the place Friday night and I seen numerous people driving through the water that shouldn't have been. But, you know, just I think if those barricades were up a little quicker, especially when we were, I think we were forewarned about that. We never know what we're truly going to get, but I just think that's not asking too much, but might help prevent some people's concerns about stuff like that. Because if I'm living there and somebody flies past my house, there's trouble, you know? And I don't blame people for being upset over that, but the second thing is down, I talked to you about that six-inch pump we have. I realized it topped that levee. I didn't see it personally. I've heard it topped that levee. You know, but I want to make sure we still have that agreement there with that homeowner that's changed hands, that we can still put that pump there. And we'd probably be looking for a new pump now and stuff, but I think anything that we can do ahead of time, you know, with the warnings we had. I think we ought to be a little more proactive than reactive with things like that. And I think it's something we need to have Alliance's help. We need to know that we're, you know, on track with it. Because I also heard there was numerous attempts. Now, I don't know this to be a fact, that they were reached out to, I guess by the 911 or whatever that procedure is. And they didn't get responses right away. That's troubling, you know, to hear that and stuff. I don't know if it's true. I don't know, but if there was anything to it. I think we need to talk about it and I think we need to have a better plan of action. Who's supposed to respond? How long are they supposed to respond by? But I'd rather cry wolf in a case like this than have to go after the fact of water rescues and all of this stuff that went on Friday night. But I'm a little bit upset about those things and stuff. But I also, I've lived by that North Gavri Creek for 48 years. And I can tell you, in all my 48 years there, I've never seen that particular creek as high as it was. The South Gavri Creek wasn't as bad, I don't think, or I didn't see it. I was more concerned about up there because, one, I have livestock up there and I was trying to make sure they were all on high ground. And it's kind of funny, they're not smart animals, but they do seek higher ground. And the moral of mentioning that is we all need to take a little more precautions when stuff like this happens and stuff to be a little more prepared. But especially the people that we're paying to do this, whatever we can do, I think we need to do ahead of time rather than after the fact. That's all.
Happy to Bob's point, do we have a run book checklist, anything that managers can run through if they have advance warning of a rain event on that scale?
We don't have anything printed out.
Could we develop that or?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just kind of a spreadsheet that says who's supposed to get the first call from
Right.
the appropriate agencies and stuff, and they've got so long to respond. Now, I don't know, like I said, I wasn't right there. If that did happen, if it did happen and we didn't get a response in a timely manner, then shame on somebody.
So it would have gone to the on-call phone and I'm not sure where that would have, where that was translated or related after that, so.
I mean, to run the things that Bob addressed, I think are important. And also, like anywhere, there's a large box culvert with a grate on it to make sure that it's clean and free before the rain event. Although I will say the volume of water I saw over the weekend, it probably flushed every bit of trash and junk up against there and probably blocked it off even more during the rain event itself. But, you know, if we get to say have a truck run by and just inspect, if you've got ample notice, if you've got 12 hours notice or 24 hours notice.
We checked all the grates. We checked both north and south sides of Oakwood. We've gone through all of those to make sure that we had those clear because we understood what we're talking about.
Perfect.
But then even cleaning them during the event as well, too, if it's safe to be out there cleaning them while it's in a safe manner. It's possible to be cleaning them as well during an event. I think that would be just as important as making sure they're clean beforehand. But I'm still curious why we didn't have that pump on standby, ready to go for that lowland area down in Washington.
So we had talked to the homeowner about putting it up there. We just did not put it up there soon enough on Friday.
But we have legal access to be able to do that. There's no question we can put that pump in the appropriate spot.
Yeah. Sounds what I understand, yes.
Is the top of that levee still all just dirt?
I think it's grass.
Well, right. You know, we need to make sure we can get that pump there ahead of time. And like I said, if we're looking for a pump now because it overtopped the levee and right that one, so be it and stuff. But I'd rather be addressing that than, you know, you never know how high it was going to get. But it did, and I know it topped the levee, I'm told and stuff, but it should have been there beforehand and stuff. There's no reason that it shouldn't have been. We put it there how many times?
I don't know, because we haven't since I've been here as a city administrator. And before then, I'm not sure.
And I guess we regularly check that thing, make sure it runs and starts and.
It's generally a sewer pump used for either pumping out what we have at the plant if something goes down or a lift station.
Right.
That's the main purpose that we use it for.
I mean, I understand those flapper gates, when the water gets higher on one side than it is on the other side, they're not going to open. I don't know if there's a better way out there, but maybe we need to look into that rather than just, you know. But like I said, North Gavri Creek had a lot to do with the problems because of how high it got. And that was unusual, but normally they're both running crazy, but that one was much, much, much higher than the other one. I think we owe that to the people.
Make a comment or something like that. I would go down in our second street in Washington Street.
Hold on. We're going to get the public comment here in just a few minutes, okay? Thank you. All right, any other questions for Happy regarding the city administrators' report right now? Okay. Thank you. This time, we'll move ahead to staff reports. First up tonight, we'll have Chief Stagger. You not here? Okay. Remind?
I think he's at that fire.
Oh, that's right. He's at the conference. Correct, okay. Good, and we'll skip ahead to David Boba, Community Development.
Good evening, everyone. My report there, just want to reference a few things. Under the Heritage Commission, the 2024 Historic Preservation Grant Application. I don't know if you remember, we applied for that in September of 2023 and it was approved in November of 2023. We finally got an agreement sent to us this last week, so we're going to look that over, get back with shippo and hopefully come back to you with an agreement here in the next month. That's for a mobile app walking tour through downtown historic district. Skip down to the comprehensive plan. Just an update, I mentioned the annexation plan proposal last month was going to, I'm sorry, last meeting was going to bring it to you. But we're going to go ahead and have an annexation open house. That'll go out, it was, that went out in the paper this week and it'll go out on the website tomorrow. Either tomorrow or Monday, we'll add a page to the website also. That'll kind of give that information to the folks who want to take a look at it. We'll have that on April 17th from 5:30 to 7:00 here at City Hall, so a week from tonight. Skip to the back page, just a quick update. I gave you the numbers from the National Weather Service there on the chances of minor, moderate, and major flooding. Those numbers still hold true. I checked this afternoon. River crested around 26 foot Tuesday evening and everything else on there is still accurate. Any questions?
Dave, your annexation meeting from 5:00 to 7:00?
5:30 to 7:00, a week from tonight, right here.
Thank you, sir.
And it'll be an open house. There's some elected officials that'll be there. I'll be there. I'll probably do a small presentation and then just take questions. Yes, sir.
Dave, if there's a situation on an occupancy permit that we or someone sees that they feel might be, there wasn't an occupancy permit applied for and granted, what would be the proper procedure for reporting that or saying that or what?
I'm confused. We did an inspection and now they want reports. Okay.
We just noticed somebody move in and pretty sure there hasn't been
So
a permit.
If there's a change in the water, we'll catch it. If there's a change in the electricity, we'll catch it. It might be a month or two down the road because we get a report from citizens and then, of course, we get our own reports from our folks up front who change the water bills.
Yeah, there's multiple properties there. There's one water thing that.
So, once we get a report from citizens, we would call the landlord or the owner and ask, tell them they needed an occupancy. If for some reason the water nor the electric gets changed, we don't have a way of catching that. But whoever lives there or a neighbor can certainly call. If they live there and they want us to do an occupancy, they can invite us in. Somebody has to pay for the inspection, but they can certainly invite us in.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you, David.
Next up tonight, we have Tourism Director Aaron Smith.
Hello, everybody. I guess I'll start with the most exciting news first. We're getting a nice Liver Dumplings sign outside of the old brick. It'll go on the planter out there. We submitted a grant with the William Pomeroy Foundation. It's very easy. They gave us the money. We submit the application, they send us a sign. It's a really nice, heavy cast iron sign. And, you know, for a dish that's as iconic as the Philly cheesesteak, this will be really fun to have up in town. I found out last Friday that I will be receiving the Missouri Division of Tourism's Rising Star Award at this year's annual Governor's Tourism Conference in October.
Here, here.
Yeah, very cool stuff. Mostly cool for just the momentum we have in St. Jen. I feel kind of like on a statewide level, we have kind of all eyes on St. Jen. They sent some, two representatives, including their deputy director, to the brand reveal back in February and they were really excited about that. So I think we've got a lot of great momentum going. We got our first deliverable from the Small Town Showcase. The podcast was recorded a couple of weeks ago. If you get on Spotify and you search St. Genevieve, you will see the podcast. I chose Bill Naggar, you know, St. Gen's own, and paired him with Laura Jablonsky, who won the, who won, who was the, found the baby in the cake and was the queen of St. Genevieve for a year. You know, you have this outside perspective of somebody who really loves St. Genevieve and then someone like Bill who's, you know, lived here all his life, raised a family here and just has been all in on the history and heritage tourism. And I think they did a really wonderful job. It's about an hour to listen. I implore all of you to take a listen to that. The French Heritage Corridor Conference, the annual conference will be held at Washington University from April 23rd to the 26th. They will be taking a field trip here that Friday, the 25th. Bob Mueller nominated me to participate in a panel discussion at Wash U for that conference, talking about how do we promote the French Heritage Corridor. And I think it's a great thing.
Was that a punishment or was that a blessing?
I mean, you know, you know, I say sometimes we get beat over the head with the history stick. It might be a little bit like that. But, you know, I think it's always an opportunity to, I mean, this is a regional and national organization that, you know, that we could partner with to kind of magnify our message, and I think that's always a good thing. But coming down with that bus tour, the French consulate of Chicago will be here as well, so hoping the mayor. And if any of you aldermen would like to come, we're having lunch outside in the Bolduc Yard that day. So if you want to come and rub shoulders with the French consulate, that would be appreciated. So I'm sure they'll appreciate it. Free lunch. Yeah, yeah, and I'll be cooking as well, so in a little, in my French colonial outfit, so you'll enjoy that. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Anticipated completion on that visit widget.
It is, I missed the meeting today, but it was, I was supposed to go through my training today. We're going to be launching the website next week, so I will hopefully have sat through my training on that. But it's complete, it's ready to roll. Actually, if you wanted to download it, you could look up Visit St. Genevieve in your app store. You should be able to download it.
Excellent, thank you.
Aaron, kind of jumping ahead a little bit, is this amount in the resolutions coming up under the consent agenda, is that one up?
Which one?
With McDaniels?
It's not up. It's a, what number? Which one?
The 60.
The 60, that's what we do every year, yeah. So like, the only way we can actually get more money for that is if we add lodging. So if we got a big hotel, they would actually, you know, up the amount that they could match. But it's been pretty consistent since before me, yeah.
Any other?
All right, thanks.
And congratulations on the board. At this time, we will open up the floor to public comment. Did just want to stress one thing before we do open it up. The board cannot interact with you, so I don't want you to take that as a slide if you're coming up here to discuss. I know, but I do want you to be able to speak and say your piece and relay any information. And then your alderman or an official will follow up with you after the fact to discuss it further if need be, okay? So I just wanted to remind everybody.
Bob Brownie, I just want to thank Alliance and all the city workers, the police department, the fire department for working out in that bad storm that night. I appreciate it. They did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Name is Kenny Schweiss. I got some property there on 199 Washington. Four times now I've had water in my building, four times. Getting kind of mad about it. Years ago, the city bought a pump to put down there behind it because there is a culvert through the levee back there with a flapper valve in it. And when the creek's up, flapper valve shuts, rainfall comes from up here at the courthouse, all the way up St. Jen School and everything, all down the hill, down there to the lower area in Washington. Three times now, the city has failed to take a pump back there and put in back there to pump the water over the levee. Two times, they didn't think it would get as bad as what it did, but I had water in my building. I'm at the only structure in this city that gets water in their building every time in a heavy rain like that. Pump ain't going to do no good if it's sitting up here in the shop. Ain't going to do no good at all trying to pump the water back over and into the creek down there. It's bad enough when it gets up high enough to get in my building, but when it gets close to it and there ain't barricades up, no barricades whatsoever and people are driving through it. I went down there Friday evening at 8:30. Water all the way across the road, no barricades up. And people were flying up and down through there. Guess they think it's fun to wash out their vehicle on the lower side. But one time it was bad. I had to call the cops. I told them, I said, you better get somebody down here because they're fixing to be trouble. Because I was waiting for the next idiot to come through there. Because when they're flying up and down through there, what's it do? It sends waves over and up into my building if it ain't in there already. I don't get no protection down there whatsoever. It shouldn't be like that. Did the core engineers design this like that for that to be a low area down there, a basin catch? Is that the way it was designed where it'd get into my building? I wish somebody would find out from the core engineers if that there is the way it was designed. Because if it is, it ain't no good. There's a way to fix it. There's plenty of rain back behind my shop and back there next to the levee. Why don't they dig that out? Dig a big hole back there. That way the water's got someplace to run to till they can get back in there and pump it out. I told them when they bought that pump, I said, I believe they paid $10,000 for it. I told them, I said, it's a waste of money. I said, what if somebody don't have time to get it down there? What if somebody ain't got time to get there in the middle of the night and fuel it up? What's going to happen then? I told them, I said, put a pump in it pump in. It's a low part of the city. It's a problem, child. Nobody's done anything about it. Nobody. And it don't help when there ain't no barricades up. I asked the city administrator Monday, he was running the city Friday night. His answer was, I guess it was me. If I was running the business and paying somebody $85,000 a year, I'd fire him because somebody wasn't doing their job. Somebody was not doing their job at all. Because there was all kinds of failures that shouldn't have happened and did. Got another homeowner here who wants to talk about damage in his place.
My name's Darrell Palmer. I live at 199 North Second here in St. Jen. Right before that water come up, my wife called the police and asked them to put barricades out because it was starting to come over the road down there, Washington Street or Second Street. And it was building up, backing up, and they said, well, we're going to try to do the best we can to get down there. And it wasn't long and the water really raised. And then like a bunch of, like Kenny said, he goes, well, guys go flying by. And some lady come up there, right the corner of his place and between his place and my place, and drowned it out. So they had a tow truck come in, back up. He couldn't pull her because the plastic would tear off in front of her car, so he put a winch on it, pulled her butt out. By that time, there comes another damn tow truck doing about 90 up through there. And that's where the water went up into Munchkins, I call him Munchkin, goes up in his spot. And then on our side, they got over in our yard and we live up on that mound right on the corner. And that water went all the way up my, to get in the garage, just far from going over to get in our garage. From people not putting the barricades up. That's all we ever asked for. My wife called way before they'd ever got that high and they didn't do it. And I figured, what the hell you doing? Because you're supposed to, that's that your job, do your damn job. The city does it, whatever. And then one time they had water down there. They left the barricades down. They had to take them back to City Hall, but they come and pick the damn things up. But they had barricades. I had them. I'd have put them out, but you got to, you got to talk to these people and say, hey, when the water's coming like this and you know what's coming way in advance, get them down there. Because like I said, it got to my garage and my garage just as much higher than the road is. And the water went up. It washed all the stuff in the flower beds. All of it got washed away too, so that don't matter to me. That's why it's a problem. But I just want to just let you know that, hey, there's things that can be done early if you do it early enough. But this fixing stuff that nobody does and we got to go fix it because they were too late to do their damn job. It's getting old. So, thank you.
I'm down there just talking about notice or whatever. Weather stations were calling for that weather for five days. Five days. Five days in the rain. They weren't even a bump taken down in my shop.
I talked to, they think way back then, one of the best, like electric, smurf pump, like why don't they go and work down there? Pump it, goes down, takes off, takes back on and work comes up. Going to cost some money. Pump it, goes down, takes off, takes back on, and work comes up. Going to cost some money there. But it hasn't. That's the way you take care of it, because the plank has gotten out there.
Any other public comment at this time?
I want to know something's gonna be done about this, about barricades and all that, getting the pump back here and everything. Are we gonna wait till two years from now and then it happens again?
We'll, we'll follow up with you after the meeting about that.
Because that only gets, then nothing gets done until again, and then they can say so, you know?
I understand. I know what you're saying. We just can't comment on that specifically right now. But like I mentioned, one of us will get in contact with you after the meeting to discuss further.
My name's Justin Martin. My wife, Janie, and I, we live at seventy-one Oakwood Drive. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with Oakwood. On one side of it, there's, across from seventy-one, there's this large dip, and it fills up like a lake. Dave Weber lives on one side of that, and that lake, it gets up like really close to his house. And that causes all the problems in the neighborhood, in that area. That's what causes everybody's sewers to come back up. But it, it, there's a fix. I don't know exactly how it works, but every time the city comes over the trucks, I always assume that they pulled, that there's like a gate or something down there, and I know there's a cave that comes under the road, under Oakwood right there, and it comes over, and then behind our house, there's another entrance to that cave. Anyway, as soon as the trucks come over, that whole thing goes down. I think they pull like a plug or a gate out and allow it to go into that, into that cave system. But that could all, of the sewer backing up in our basement filled up with sewer water. Not, it's not as nearly as bad as what some of these guys got it. But the city's usually real good about it. They're usually there on time. Couple times this year, it's gotten up in, in our neighbors and just about all those sewers came back up. But if we could just be on that, it would save you guys a lot of problems, us a lot of problems, everybody a lot of problems, just to watch out that. Because that's one whole neighborhood that can be fixed with one, with one shot, just to lower that one spot. And it lowers in just a couple minutes, it's gone. Like I said, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speculate on the system, the, the court, and what they, what they do over there. But something, and it's gone, and that, that saves everybody a lot of problems. So anyway, that's, that's all I got. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Thank you all that came and shared. We do appreciate it. We are, we will get in touch with you, okay? This time, we will move along on our agenda to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? And with that, we will address the whole business. We have the second reading of Bill number four, six, six, four. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Municipal Man.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Iden.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Peggy.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number forty-six, sixty-four now becomes ordinance forty-five, eighty-five.
Very much. Next up, we'll have a second reading of Bill number four, six, six, five. This is an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget relating to various revenue and expenditure increases.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Dobbs, yes. Alderman Peggy.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Iden.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number forty-six, sixty-five now becomes ordinance forty-five, eighty-six.
Thank you. This will be a second reading of Bill number four, six, six, six. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a construction and inspection services contract with Cochran Engineering for the Ninth Street Improvements Project.
I have a little bit of discussion about that, Happy. Kind of disappointed, I think I showed you earlier some pictures there on our newly paved Fourth Street project of gravel showing through holes in the blacktop, and they were supposed to inspect that. I, and I guess the procedure is for them to sign off after the job is done.
Correct.
Well, they didn't do their job. And I can tell you on this Ninth Street project, I've pushed for this thing a long time. I'm tired of hearing, you know, the neighbors up there. I'm tired of driving over it myself. I'm only one of eight, but I can tell you what, I'm not, I'm not gonna stand for any of that type of stuff up there. That's too expensive of a project. With the increased traffic up there, it needs to be done, and it needs to be done right. And if I need to call Cochran and talk to them themselves, I don't want to step in anybody's toes doing it, but I'm gonna expect first quality work up there soon to finish. You know, so if there's any question, it will be brought up, and it will be brought to their attention, and I'm not gonna accept, and I'm gonna ask the other board members not to accept anything but first quality project up there.
So I will contact Cochran about, about the issue that you showed me down in Fourth Street. Because Joker's paving, at this point, has the low, low bid needed that project. They have the low bid for Ninth Street.
Yeah, I'll, well, I hope to be a part of that conversation and stuff because I'm not shy on words, and I'm not afraid to call what it needs to be. But, you know, we're gonna spend, what, a half a billion dollars up there?
Little over four hundred.
Little over four hundred. We've already put forty-seven thousand into engineering and stuff. That's gonna be done right, or else, I don't think that's asking too much. I'm a little cautious about yokers doing this job, and I think it's some discussion we may need to have because I've, I've just been firsthand to some things. I just want to make sure we're on, we're gonna get good quality work and we're on the same page. Because this is a total tear out, total rebuild. We want to have a street there not like Rosemont Street twenty years from now.
I was twelve, it was twenty years ago. How long was Rosemont Street?
I don't know. I just pulled that number out.
Yeah, ten or twelve. I don't think it was even.
No, it's longer than that, isn't it?
Rosemont Street's been a while. Hasn't been twenty. But your point is well taken.
Yeah.
In our motion?
Oh, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Donovan.
I'm gonna abstain from that. I want to see the proof of the work before I, I say yes. So I'm just gonna abstain from voting. I'm not gonna vote for, I'm not gonna vote against.
Stated, please.
Stating this point.
Good.
Okay. Alderman Peggy.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs, Sam and Bob. Alderman Iden.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, two abstaining. Bill number forty-six, fifty. Six now becomes ordinance forty-five, eighty-seven.
Next up, we'll have a second reading of Bill number four, six, six, seven. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Superior Industrial Coatings LLC, DBA, SIC Concrete for the citywide concrete replacement project in an amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Iden.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Peggy.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number forty-six, sixty-seven now becomes ordinance forty-five, eighty-eight.
Thank you. Next up is a second reading of Bill number four, six, six, eight. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Vern Bowman Contracting Company for the citywide asphalt replacement project in an amount of three million, one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Iden.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Peggy.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number forty-six, sixty-eight now becomes ordinance forty-five, eighty-nine.
Thank you. With the old business, we do have one item of new business here to discuss. We have a first reading of Bill number four, six, six, nine. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of residual from the wastewater treatment plant.
I had a one question, Happy. This is the same company we used before? Yeah, okay.
Move to approve.
What do they do? They take the sludge out of the holding tank, the sludge tank up at the wastewater treatment plant and apply it to approved farm fields. So D.R. approves their application to, to put or apply the sludge to different fields. Then is that, this is just routine? Yes, we do it every, how often? Every two years. Every two years, yes.
So Alliance hasn't made you aware of any issues with them, or?
No, as far as I know.
A motion to approve?
You got a motion and a second, right?
Oh.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay. Any other business to discuss at this time?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we get a study or report as far as putting in a permanent pump station in the Washington ponding area down there? As well as what we can do to stop any stormwater infiltration into my base subdivision?
Sure.
Seems to be two very big problems that we've had for the last fifteen years.
I want to say the pump's been discussed before, correct?
Yeah, I don't have any paperwork on it, so I don't know.
I don't remember.
Well, I don't think we can use our current pump and put it down there permanently.
Correct.
Because we use.
We, no, this would be for a permanent solution.
Or you might be able to do that. You might be able to leave it on a trailer and just put it inside of a shed in a semi-permanent position where if you need it once a year to go take it down to the sewer plant to pump something out down there, but then when you're done with it, you bring it back to the ponding area and have it staged there at all times. So it probably would include probably building a shed, probably maybe getting some easements. I mean, you know.
I, I believe Cochran gave us a proposal for a, a permanent pump station, it may have been a couple of years ago.
That's before I started. Because the pump that we bought is roughly from two thousand and seven, so that was when they first talked about it. And then that was, the solution was something like, that's what we have.
That, that's fine, but if it's sitting in the shed, it doesn't do anybody any good when it's sitting in the shed. So, and we knew about this for a week, so.
And you all do have a report that was compiled with, basically, I guess it was a report. Reports were submitted from each, from the fire department, Alliance, police department, and then city administrator, kind of giving you a timeline of Friday evening, so that's there for your reading pleasure. And I believe you have a letter from residents as well. So I think further discussions oriented on a lot of topics, so I think that's probably gonna continue beyond tonight's meeting, obviously.
Well, and again, the last time I have opportunity to make comments, I encourage department heads to develop a checklist. I, we've talked about it, like several things, like everything from a, a school shooting to a whatever unforeseen incident may arise. I mean, run books and checklist, and then train to those at whatever interval it may suit. I think it's in everybody's best interest, so.
Happy, I know I made several comments about things that should have been done. I mean, you know, one, I think Alliance did a respectable job, you know, down there. I think they did the best almost that they could under those circumstances. The fire department was right there. You know, it's just that it was where the rain fell and how much fell that created a unique situation down there. But, you know, could it have been prevented? There's, there's some things that could have been changed, a little more proactive and stuff. But I do think they did, you know, as good a job as they could have considering the circumstances. But in any job, I think there's always room for improvement. I think that's what we need to work towards. But I know there was a, a comment made earlier about that whole area down there, Second Street being low, and did the court design it? That's been that way for as long as I can ever remember. I don't know if there was anything ever changed. That's just the natural lay of the land.
Right.
Well, to mitigate it, though, I think, I think his question was, did the court come up with any solutions to mitigate that issue? Because it's a very low ponding area down there.
Right.
Because we had Cochran looking at that as well. Anything jump out that they saw that could resolve that situation, resolve the issue?
They're gonna have to pump it.
I mean, other than that flapper type of valve, I don't know if there's something that could be, you know, electronically picked on or done different. I don't know, I'm not a flood expert and stuff. But, you know, I, I think, you know, anything we can do to look into those things to help out that situation, I think we should try to do as time permits.
Agreed. And then Happy, I had a resident ask what the status was on the bridge repair from getting hit. Is there any update on that?
On North Fourth Street? I mean, it's, the cost to, we got paid by the insurance company based on the cost that Cochran came up with. I don't know if there's a need to try to do something with it because it is stable as it is.
Or at least try to put it in the place a little better than what it is.
If you move it, you could loosen it even more, and at this point, it's, it is best just to leave it as is. Because of the amount of times it's been hit, I hate to make a repair and have it get hit again. We were lucky that we saw, or that a neighbor saw, somebody saw the truck hit that bridge. We'd still be wondering what happened.
I've seen kids playing around that bridge and stuff. I'd be afraid that trunk falling off on them or something, but.
It seems pretty well-braced and connected. I mean, we can, we can try to fix it, it, it will be.
Shore it up some way or something to make it, you know?
Is there any reason that Alliance wasn't here tonight? It would seem like if a major event like this involving streets and sewers and everything that's happened.
They're here.
David, I remember, hi, Alliance is here.
Saw them, Dave.
Would, do you have any comments on the whole procedure for what went on?
So staging barricades out per two flooding events, especially one that came in this fast. There are less barricades, and when the water rising that quickly. If the water rising that quickly, they wash out. We have done that in the past and have lost barricades down the crease, and then it does no good anyway. So we try to, I mean, when the BD calls us, we do have them, we have to practice outside what we think the floodwaters are going to want to. As far as the pump goes, I've worked with this for seven years, and that pump's only been set up one time. And that moved in starting in two thousand and nineteen. And that's when the four minsters added to the levee, the big levee, because the waters were all the way to the top. Beyond that, yeah, I mean, we're always open to decisions. We may have, if we can, our residents. But, yeah, eight inches of rain is difficult to deal with.
So on that narrative report that you had, there were some recommendations from all the department heads at the end of that, that we're going to implement.
But the water was higher on the creek side of the levee.
It, it breached the levee.
Right, it breached the levee, but I mean, all, up until it breached the levee, it was higher the creek side than what it was on the Second Street side. Right. Which closed the flapper and stopped that water from going through.
Any other discussion right now?
I would just offer, I don't know who's gonna run point on getting back with Mr. Schweiss, but if somebody needs help or whatever I can do to help, when I'm no longer in this capacity, let me know, I'd be happy to do that. And, and also hopeful that department heads will develop not only checklists for, for whatever incident you, you may deem appropriate, but then train to that checklist on a regular interval, i.e. quarterly, hey, what would happen if we had seven inches of rain in a half hour? What would you do? And then maybe sit around a table, all department heads collaborate. I mean, those tabletop exercises, I think, would be very helpful. I really do. Like to see that.
Any other discussion? There's no other business, then we will go ahead and adjourn and move into work session. Work session ordered. Now, at this time, we'll look for approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Sergeant.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number one, we have a, a request for some dedicated street parking for a short, short-term rental at two-twenty Merchant Street.
Martin's are here and they've got some information to pass on to you guys.
A lie or no, you know? The DeFour House, the Parfait DeFour House is finished. We're just adding some few odds and ends here and there, but it's finished. We was with the house tour a couple of weeks ago, had a lot of in, gave tours of the house, and P, it was a big hit, people loved it. And if anybody's not familiar, that's the house that the lore supports that Lewis and Clark stayed in that house, and there is like historical and written evidence to support that. So it'll be a big hit with tourism and with history buffs who want to come and visit. There's already a lot of bookings for it, and it's people coming in and spending money. You know, it's good for everyone, but in order for this house to be a center for tourism in that part of town and, and history, it needs a parking place. And that is right on Merchant Street, and everybody just parks on the sides there, that's fine, you know, but I would like to make a sign that looks just like this, metal, and attach it to our, the street lamp that's on the sidewalk right there for when people are there. And when there's not a guest there, I can take it down so that that parking spot is never going to waste. It's just, uh, it doesn't mean it's legally my spot or legally belongs to the house, it just motivates people to not park there if they don't have to and to save it for, for the guests. And that's more people coming to visit and more money spent in town if they have a place to park. And like I said, when there's no guests there, I can remove the sign that way that it's not a, a spot going to waste at any given time. So I, uh, that's all I got.
You're saying this is a short-term rental like an Airbnb?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is.
So you have no access, uh, I don't know, for some reason or another, I'm not real familiar with that property.
I had pictures and I left them, I apologize for that. It looks, because everything looks really nice down there, and it was a, it was a big venture and a, a lot of work, but it really paid off, and the house is in really good condition now.
There's no off-street parking, that's what the, what the issue is.
Ain't no driveway.
Right.
So that little grassy area-
Does he have it pulled up?
Yeah.
That grass, may I?
Sure.
Walk around? Uh, well, that grassy area, that was my other thing, but that would involve a whole request for a curb cut and all that. I would just come down, this was something, just like to let them park right here on the street, but I'd like to put a sign there that just says, "Do for parking." Doesn't mean do for parking only, it mean, you know, people can still park there, uh, just to keep the people, uh, in that spot, got them to that spot, and so we could tell the guests, the people who want to come visit the town, learn more about the town and all, we'll have a place to park.
That's kind of a tight spot for parking along there and stuff, especially-
It is. Yeah, it is.
Yes.
And, and everybody deals with it who works down there or goes down there, deals with trying to find a place to park, but for people who are gonna come and stay in that house, I'd like to have a place for them. I'd like for them not to have to deal with the same things everyone else looking for a spot when they come down. That could really affect the, uh, the people it brings into the town.
It's a homeowner, we have to circle around several times for us to find a spot to work on our house, and I wouldn't let guests come with suitcases, things, walk halfway down the street.
And the people that we've talked to during the house tours that are interested in that house, a lot of the business we got from that tour, the real history buffs, the real a good quality type of people, they don't bring trouble, they're, they're learners, you know, travelers, and they're into the history of the town, so it attracts a good breed of people that will be staying in that house, I believe. So, uh, just like for them to have a, a place to, a designated place to park, if that's, if it's okay for us to put just a little bitty sign on that lamp post, that's all.
Happy, are we being asked to restrict parking there, or are we leaving it up to them to monitor?
You're not being asked to restrict anything, this, so like, and like I said, when no one's staying there, I will just take the sign off.
Right.
And, uh, that way, but if somebody steals the parking spot, then whatever, they, they stole it, you know? Maybe it'll motivate people not to take that parking spot, though, and that way we can at least tell guests there is a parking spot attached to it.
We still have time if someone's booking, unless it's a last minute booking, you know, then they kind of have to find their own parking, I guess, you know?
But no, I'm, I mean, that would be great if we had have a restricted parking spot designated with that, but I understand if that's not exactly doable, too.
So you're not calling the cops if somebody's parking there?
No.
Or Happy?
No.
No.
My ticket book. I mean, there's, there's zero burden on law enforcement and there, is there a ordinance that says they can't post a sign? I, I don't know why you need it. You can't post a sign on the city.
On a city lamp?
Well, okay.
Okay, I could put it on the house, but I'd like, I need it to be on the lamp because it faces this way. Yeah, exactly, otherwise it's flat to the house and people won't see it.
I mean, they've come up with a compromise, we discussed why we don't do that, why we don't have dedicated parking spaces down. There's probably others that want to do that.
Mm-hmm.
But the, the request is actually just to post a sign on the, our post.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
But if we-
I'm not actually asking for like, yeah, the restrict, like for to that, to belong to, uh, for that spot to be ours or anything like that, or to call anyone if somebody takes it. Yeah, if somebody takes it, they take it, you know, but- That way we can say that it has a parking spot in the, in the advertisement, it can say it has a parking spot, and we won't be lying when we say that, it does have a parking spot.
You see signs on all of those posts downtown?
Just seeing it now, everything's gonna have a sign. Well, if they want to come to a meeting and talk about it first, but maybe most people will, don't, maybe it don't mean that much to most people, but-
I mean, my opinion is put it on the house and make it legible, but I'm just one of eight.
Right.
I just don't want to see every post down there with a sign on it because they're decorative, they're spent a lot of money on-
Sure, sure.
I understand your-
Mm-hmm.
Things.
So if it wasn't like a historic house, like such a landmark, I would never bother with it. If the house wasn't so old and it wasn't so, uh, there wasn't so much history to it.
So the, the request is whether or not he can put a sign on the post, which I, I mean, no offense, I really don't want to open that can of worms. Now, on particular days that he has bookings, is there anything that says he can't do like some places do and, and like, for instance, when there's a funeral, they put signs out to restrict parking between the courthouse and valleys?
Like a folding sign.
Yeah, to where-
They do it for juror fat, they do it for funerals, they do it for brown.
But those are special events that they have street closures for already, but-
I mean, yeah, I was really just coming down to, to discuss the options, you know, so, I mean, I'd be happy with that.
Like if he had an orange cone and that sign, that sign that he passed around was on top of that orange, would he be able to do something like that? I mean, it, it's not enforceable, but it's more of a, hey, there's a sign there, let's not park there. If somebody does park there, there's still no enforcement of it.
Right.
It is a city street, you can't block a city street, so you would have, still like to give permission for them to be able to do that, because-
But he's not looking for a permanent, I mean, he could put a sign out there, if somebody chooses to ignore it, they're more, I mean, we can't do anything about it, but there's nothing that keeps him from trying to keep somebody from parking there, other than, I mean, he can't go out and tell them, hey, you can't park there. Well, yeah, they can, but-
I mean, I see signs out like that saying, "Special of the day." You know, there are temporary signs that get put out saying, "We have liver dumplings."
Well, and just-
Okay, yeah, so I could do something like that, maybe.
Sandwich board? Sandwich board kind of thing?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Do they need to stay up on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, and it'd just be like from here, maybe a little arrow to here? We could work with that.
How wide is that sidewalk?
Mm-hmm.
How wide is that sidewalk? It looks pretty narrow.
Well, today I was walking and me and a guy passed each other on it, but it was a little bit tight, so something like that.
Would it be opposed to putting the cone right off the curb?
I don't know if you can have it on the street.
Would it be opposed to putting the cone right off the curb where it's not blocking the sidewalk?
Part of the curb that is still curb, but it's down-
I mean, do we really want that going out there? I mean, I'm not, I, I know what you're saying, I just like the-
It would li, it would not look, it'd be bright, it'd be noticeable, then the people have to, would have to get out and move the cone so that they could park it.
Stick with the sidewalk.
I don't see much difference in that than just allowing them to put the sign over there. Put the sign on the post. He's a-
Well, you're-
The wooden post? I mean, would I be motivating everybody to start setting cones out or signs or, or little signs on, or would be better with a little sign? I'm, I don't know.
Maybe you're gonna do, you want to make it noticeable, so.
Sure, sure.
It's, but, I know what's in there.
If you guys got any other ideas, then-
A small, little one-foot-wide sandwich board.
Hold on just a sec. All right, so what were you, go ahead.
Just like a small little one-foot-wide sandwich board, it would be right next to the light bulb, so you wouldn't be tacking onto the light bulb and you wouldn't be drilling it.
Breaking, and wouldn't be breaking any laws, right?
Yeah, you just set it there and when you don't have a tenant, you move it.
I don't know, is that gonna create too much extra work for you? I don't want to burden you.
No, no, I ain't worried about that. We were thinking about, I mean, our other, uh, request, there was a time I was gonna see if you'd let us do a curb cut and actually pull it up in that grassy part behind the house that he was, uh, that he was showing to you, but, uh, I don't know, if I were to request that, you think that would be a, that would be doable?
We can look at it.
I'm not requesting it now, it's just like, would it even be worth bringing to the table later on? So anything is less work than that, so is what I'm saying.
I think we don't have to look at specs, but I, I mean-
Maybe down the line, that's, that's the goal, so, at some point, to have a, a parking spot, but anything's less work than that, so no, making some sandwich boards is not a problem.
You own the yard behind the house?
Mm-hmm.
You own the yard behind the house up to the fence of this?
Yeah, yeah, and there's a really good spot there if that ground was flattened down and, but, uh, but no, we just want people to, uh-
One side of the wooden fence, and then we have a small strip, get a car in there and tie, because we have our AC unit on the side of our house, so it's gonna be tight. And then when you pull back, I'm worried about, there's a curb around the corner that people are turning, I mean, I don't know, that'd be a wreck, wouldn't happen.
It's a blind corner.
It is, yeah.
I like the temporary sign where you set it by the post, I mean-
Okay, so-
Try that for a couple of months?
You wanna try that?
Yes, yes, Scott, yeah, that's, that's fine.
And if that's not sufficient?
We'll come back and talk to you all.
We'll want to talk about the curb cut at that time and maybe there's, you know, I think we just have to see a proposal for it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, just in talking with, with Happy, there's nothing that would necessarily prevent you from doing that, assuming that it met the, what you're doing-
Sure.
Requiredness that we need, but I, I mean, I think that could be a long-term solution if we got to that.
Yeah.
It's nice to see the improvement there. One hundred percent, right? I, I want to thank you for investing your time and-
And if any of you guys see us working down there and you are interested in what it looks like on the inside, we'll show you around, give you a free tour, so, but we're, we like showing off what we done to it, so.
Okay, so consensus, I think, is that we'd like to see some kind of sandwich board, temporary sign to start, let's see how that goes, and then we can discuss from there.
Yep, sounds good, thanks, guys.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Here's your-
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My wife designed that.
There you go.
Now that was the reason. Uh, we will move on to work session, agenda item number two, and this is in regards to the volunteer call-out, training stipend for the fire chiefs.
Well, go ahead, you first, and I'll ask my question.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna just go over the issue, is it, the board hired and set a, a rate when we did budgeting, um, so we worked with that amount to, to, is what he gets paid per hour, eighteen hours a week, uh, sorry, eighteen, for eighteen thousand dollars is twenty-four hours per week, that's his pay schedule. But when they do their, their semi-annual payout for the other firefighters, they, they come up with the training slash call-outs. So this is if you're, if you are going out and going to the fire calls and if you are attending the training sessions, then you get some money, uh, every, you know, twice a year, and that's the number that you saw for his pay and for the other officers. Firefighters themselves get paid less, but, um, again, they're, they don't have that responsibility, but again, you capped it at one amount, when this came across my desk, it's like, I'm not sure if that's what the board wants to include. Because we need to, if we do that, we have to pay him as, as an employee as well, and not the, not like the volunteers, because they're bona fide volunteers, he however is a part-time employee.
But when he's doing this training, he would be considered a volunteer?
Nope, he is a part-time employee. You can't separate the two.
Wow. I think, you, you can't have him just working twenty-four hours a week, so we gotta figure out a way to get him compensated for this additional training, it's silly.
But you're still allowed to give an employee a stipend.
You can do that for like vehicles, or, you know, if you have mileage and if you have other things, but-
And when you're doing extra training, when you're, I mean.
A training stipend, we can't just rename it?
Probably not legally, for federal labor standards, no?
Well, I mean, the, the training itself falls outside of his administrative duties that we are paying for. I feel. Absolutely. And he's always gotten that training, I'm assuming he's always gotten the stipend part of that, whatever it was called before, before he became a paid person, he got that, that amount too, right?
Right.
I think, well, I.
So that.
I think there's a difference there, I mean, I, if we have to rename how it's paid or I wish Mark was here or some financial person was here to tell us, but I.
Let, let's figure out a way to get this done, this is silly.
I'm just saying, if you want it paid, if you want that amount paid, then we will proceed with that, but again.
What was it called before?
It's called.
So that has nothing to do with the clothing?
No.
Thing?
But it's also not, has nothing to do with his administrative pay that he's getting, it's sep, I mean, I, I feel it's separate. And that we still owe it.
Yeah, this, this, well, it's kind of coming up after the fact here to me because I thought, I mean, I just figured he was doing a separate job for a separate pay and this would be in addition.
Well, it would just continue.
Hours a week, it'd be, you know, I know we cut this down how many times and stuff to eighteen thousand. So we're talking about how much money actually per year.
So his, again, he's making the eighteen thousand a year and then this was outside of what the board had approved as his pay. So if you want to pay that, then we will have to adjust it so that he would come out to be four twenty.
That's twice a year or once a month?
Twice a year.
Yeah, it's four hundred and twenty dollars twice a year, it's eight hundred dollars we're arguing about.
It sounds like.
For a guy that's putting in an extra forty hours a week.
We could vote and approve it right now without further discussion is what it sounds like, but.
Yeah, I thought it was more than this, I thought we were talking about, yeah, I, this should be a done deal, this is no.
You're probably thinking about his, his chief paid, pride, his bona fide volunteer, you were thinking of that, that's not what this is, this is just a call-out.
Yeah, yeah, my opinion is bad.
Need a voice vote?
No, I think it's not, yes, is it, is it pay that we're paying and doesn't cover call-out stuff, that's his administrative pay.
You, you have four in favor, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing any issues, but I, I don't want something to, you know, if I do make that payment, it comes back to the board.
I think.
Exactly, me, yeah.
Yeah. Accept the call. Everybody's in agreement there?
Yep.
One last thing I would like to discuss, I told Happy I would discuss it, is the Chamber Gala is coming up on April twenty-fifth. This is a Friday, the city has, depending on who you talk to, the city has historically purchased a table, some years we haven't, there's some aldermen that have expressed an interest in going or having the city that feel like the city should have a table at the event. Some question becomes, is this something that, that the board of aldermen would like to do? And if so, would they like to go? Feels like, in my opinion, I think it's, I think it'd be good for us to be there, I don't see why, why not? That's a good event, when we, we do, and, and Happy does a good job, if we do have an employee or somebody affiliated with the city that is being recognized with some type of honor, Chief Stiger was recognized a couple of years ago, I want to say April twenty, was that twenty twenty-three that he was?
He was right before the gala, yeah, the gala was last year.
It was a couple of years ago, the city, yeah, oh, that's right, Alderman Jokers was being recognized as well, so we, the city purchased it. Is that something that the board is interested in?
In the book, in, I think members of the board should go, they should buy their own ticket, or you say using city money to buy a table.
The city would sponsor a table is the question, now, in the past, the city has sponsored.
Paid for the alderman's ticket.
Alderman's ticket, but not any spouses or significant others. We could continue along that path as well. It, it, it just was, it was a topic that had been discussed, so I thought we would bring it to the group to see if that's something that the group would like to do.
What we don't want to do is buy a table and nobody shows up.
Right. That would actually look worse.
Do you have to buy a table or do you just say, I want this many tickets and she places you? That's the way she used to do it.
She may have a certain table to give.
I don't know if they do.
April twenty-fifth, twenty-seven, yes, so a couple of weeks from this coming soon.
I plan on attending, so I'll go regardless, is my vote.
It's just a, it's a question, you can obviously, if, if there's not interest in that and we feel like it's not a good use or, then we'll scrap it.
I think, you know, the city paying for the alderman's fine, paying for a significant other, I think, is more than fair, I don't.
So do we want to approach it from the standpoint that we have in the past, if there is a city official employee that the city would buy, buy the table at that juncture? Or are we just gonna say that the city, if, if there are aldermen or city officials that would like to go, the city would purchase a ticket for said individual and then that person would be responsible for paying for a guest if they so choose?
And then we don't need to buy a table, you can just sit wherever you're assigned or whoever you want to sit with.
We had enough to do a table, obviously.
Makes it more attractive, you don't have to sit with the alderman.
See?
Oh, you're. The eye thoughts are, we should have set together as a group and that we pay for the alderman, we pay for the spouses, how many are at the table, how many people do you need?
Be a ten-person table.
We just gotta find ten aldermen.
Five.
We might want to go to the next alderman.
I think they should go, but then.
I think everybody should go.
All new aldermen are required to go, that's what your ideas you see.
Panel. And form.
And anybody, anybody vacating a seat also.
Right.
It's a, it's a good event.
Yeah.
It's a good event.
Okay, so it, is everybody okay if, if a city official or alderman, I mean, would you rather have a dedicated table or are you okay on a kind of demand basis if there's?
When is the deadline that we have to have the tickets by?
It's on an email on my desktop, I think it's like April nineteenth, probably come the.
So we got.
Twenty-fifth, April twenty-fifth.
Friday after our meeting, yeah.
Correct.
Who plans on going, I know I cannot attend, I, I got other plans.
I'll be.
I'll be going.
Amy, you said yes?
Yeah.
I, you're going. Yeah, and I will as well.
So am, am I putting your name on the list to get a ticket, no?
No.
Well, he'll sell it.
I've already got it.
Okay.
They like to stand there too.
I'll have to confirm if I can go next week. I'd like to go, but I'm not sure.
Well, so if we had, if we had enough of ten people, then we can just get a table and all the, the group can sit together.
I mean, two, four.
Did you say you wanted a ticket?
Mr. Russell.
Mr. Russell.
You wanted a ticket, correct?
Yeah, two.
Two.
Two, okay. Patrick? And you're gonna tell me ASAP, okay?
Yeah, next week, but it would be two, I think.
Denim and diamonds, I think.
Formal denim.
Formal denim.
And it's at the Alps, correct?
I'll let you decide what formal denim.
Is that the elk?
Yes.
It's like a Canadian tuxedo.
Time.
Six, I believe, I believe it's like doors open at six and dinner starts at seven.
This is at the Alps.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Might have liver dumplings there, maybe.
Might ask Aaron, Aaron Smith, I don't know if he's, I would imagine he probably would like to go in some capacity.
Thought I heard adjourned.
Any other business?
I was just gonna make a comment, Happy, I appreciate you being out and about Friday night, I know the people did.
Dave was out too.
I think that was a good thing.
Yep, but didn't follow up on enough stuff, so.
Well.
We didn't plan it, we didn't plan it well, well enough ahead, so.
Well, and it's not like they're giving an exact time when the rain's gonna hit and when the flooding is gonna occur, I mean, I mean.
I mean, you probably, you're still gonna have somebody coming for you with some complaints at the next meeting, so.
There's always lessons learned, and we just gotta learn from them.
I like that.
You can't prepare for every situation, I mean, it's unfortunate, but it's been like that since I was a kid and before that.
Now, if you have lessons and don't learn from them, that's another issue, so run books, train. Were you the guy with waders on the building or second in Washington?
I did not have waders.
They were just bread bags, they weren't like waders.
All right.
He was like, I have the last page of the paper and stuff.
Nothing else, we will go ahead and adjourn.